Great, welcome to this regular meeting this Wednesday evening, March the first. To call this meeting to order, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Gio, if you'll call a role for us.
Chair Hough?
Here.
Vice Chair Womack?
Here.
Chair Massey?
You.
Chair, sorry, Commissioner Massey? Commissioner Fields?
Here.
Thank you, we do have a form.
Great, so we're holding the meeting in hybrid mode. Information on how to provide public comment is explained at the bottom of each published agenda. Person at the meeting complete a request to speak forum and submit to the reporting secretary. Join the Zoom by meeting by clicking on the link at the top of the agenda. Use the raise your hand button to be called on at the appropriate time. Please unmute yourself only when called upon. Phone-in participation can be done by calling 408-638-0968 with the conference ID 859-9427-3688, passcode 576471. Press nine to raise your hand and six to unmute. These options for public comment will remain available until I close the public comment period for that specific item. And we will kick off with approval of the minutes from February 1st. Do I have a motion to approve? A second?
A second.
Great, then we'll do a votes.
I'd be happy to. Commissioner Massey?
Hi.
Commissioner Womack?
Hi.
Chair Hough?
Hi.
Commissioner Fields?
Hi.
Thank you, this motion has passed.
Great, and then next on the agenda is public comments. Members of the public wishing to comment on any item not appearing on the agenda may address the commission at this time. State law prevents us from taking action on any matter not on the agenda. Your comments may be referred to staff for follow-up. Public comment is limited to a total of 15 minutes. However, an opportunity for additional public comment may be provided later in the agenda. Gio, is there anyone on the line?
We don't have anybody on the line at this time.
Great, in that case, we will move forward with the Parks and Rec fee schedule for the year. And Nick, I'll turn it over to you. Thank you for joining us.
Good evening, everyone. And thank you very much for being here. So, um, do we have the help? Wonderful. Okay, so this is an annual process that we do here in the city. And the outcome of the process is that it sets the fees for the year ahead. Every department has their own fee schedule and Parks and Rec has theirs respectively. And what we set the fees for is things like facility rentals, including recreation spaces. We set the fees for the Popular Creek Golf Course. Items such as replacement tree planting costs, tree permits, memorial benches and the like that the Parks and Arbor Department charge for. Park and Lou fees, which is the fees that are levied upon developers when they construct residential projects. And I should note that programmatic fees, which is basically the fees that we charge for recreation programs, are excluded from this process because of the fact that they are very susceptible to market forces in the peninsula. So therefore, we keep that, we keep those off the schedule in order to be able to adjust and be nimble when need arises. So, um, the increase is usually in line with the Consumer Price Index. This year, that was 6%, which is the highest that has been in my five years of being with the city. So we either use that or we use a market adjustment. And by market adjustment, what it means is that if for the same thing that we offer a neighboring city in the peninsula is charging or neighboring cities in the peninsula are charging a great deal more or a great deal less, we allow ourselves to basically make that adjustment in order to meet the market and be in line with our neighboring cities on the peninsula. So with having said that, um, we'll go to the next page, Gio. So for recreation, the biggest changes that we made or the most notable changes that we made is that for facilities and picnics, we have new charges for non-residents, which is a $20 surcharge. So when a non-resident reserves a picnic table, for a picnic area, for instance, they will pay $20 more than a resident. At the same time, nonprofits, not-for-profits will get a 25% discount compared to the residents. And that will be likely to be rounded up or down so that it makes a little bit more sense when we, when we charge that fee. In the same space as the facilities and picnics, the other thing that we've done in order to streamline a lot of our charges is that we have made some changes to our classifications. For those of you that have seen the fee schedule in previous years, there's a section that contains a whole, two, three pages of basically different classifications and different types of nonprofits and businesses and the like that are in my mind confusing. So the department thought that it would be a good idea, now that we have a fresh eyes looking over this, to streamline this. So it's a little bit easier for consumption. And so in saying that, we basically have the three new classifications, which is basically the City of San Mateo, internal or sponsored meetings. That means that if it's a Public Works wants to have a meeting in one of our spaces, they wouldn't pay anything. Or if it was some other meeting that was held by someone that the Parks and Recreation wanted to, or their approved delegate wanted to waive the fees for. So that's pretty much your internal type of meetings. Then you've got your nonprofit or not-for-profit, so that's a second category. Third is your City of San Mateo residents. And then last, you have basically everybody else. Now, um, the biggest benefit that comes from these new classifications is that if we switch over to the, to the following page, actually keep going, Gio, there should be a table somewhere. So this now allows us to use this table, that's a proposed table that we have, that will be used in lieu of the other complicated listing of all the different categories and how much they pay. So this, so if you were to look at this table, you would see that the first column on the left is the categories that we just discussed, sorry, the classifications that we just discussed, followed by the different categories of facility. So this is based on size or seating capacity. And then last but not least, the third column shows you what your additional charges are for, say, if you're doing an after-hours meeting and it's, it needs setup, cleanup afterwards, janitorial staff, or just generally somebody to be there for the evening to lock and unlock the rec center for the duration of the meeting. So hopefully, if, if this is, does what it's intended, a person should be able to look at this quite easily and recognize what they would be, what they would be liable to pay for their facility rental. Whereas before, like I said, it was a little bit cryptic and, um, you know, some of our own staff even had challenges understanding what they would be charging the patron or the business or the resident, the non-resident. So we feel that this is a much cleaner look to it. And the only way we could have arrived at this table is by streamlining the classifications. So if we jump back to the, to this page, for the Parks Department, all changes were made in line with CPI. So therefore, there would be nothing greater than 6%. And then usually we just round down so that it's a nice whole number. For golf, there was some rounding in excess of CPI, but that excess of CPI was between 14 cents and $1.10. So I'm gonna speak to Kevin about that next time, just, uh, yeah. So yeah, and then last but not least, for Arbor, again, all, most changes were made in line with CPI. However, for trees, tree appeals, that's where someone is, that's where a resident is not happy with a decision that the managing arborist may have arrived at. They had an option to appeal to the commission. And then if that wasn't to the satisfaction, they had an option to then appeal to city council. And those fees, when you appeal to city council, those fees for the other departments are actually contained within the clerk's schedule of fees. So we transitioned that fee with the clerk's department. So that way, all the fees for those appeals to city council are there. Once there, the fee for making an appeal to city council is $519. Now, one thing that I've got bolded here is that the appeal to the commission in our schedule was $80. However, when we were considering the effort that one expends to, for the department to prepare a response to an appeal, whether it's to the commission or city council, it's the same amount of effort. And $80 just doesn't, doesn't cover anything these days. So, so if we, in order to make it consistent, and also the fact is that there would be no extra work for presenting to city council or the commission, you'd like to think that in practice, the preparation and the outcome, that all the decision, the way that the decision was arrived, is the same whether you're presenting to the commission or city council. So we, we've made that fee move from $80 to $519, which is probably. So that's the, that's the most major increase in terms of, in orders of magnitude that we've got in this, in this fee schedule. So once again, the fees will be the same. And I should also note that other departments, such as the Community Development Department, employs the same pricing methodology, which is a flat fee, whether you're appealing to the commission or to the city council. So we feel that this is a way to have some consistency across that for, for our department and the rest of the city.
And I can just really quickly, the reason it's bolded is because we forgot to update that prior to the packet being published, so apologies.
So, and then last but not least on the very last table, yeah, so impact fees. So one of the, so again, I'll just refresh your mind about the impact phase. So when a developer builds a residential, there's a residential project that creates either a new parcel of land or creates an additional residence. We, the Queen Bee Act applies fees, well, enables us to apply fees. So that way, we can provide parkland or rehabilitate existing parks. Or when there is no subdivision of the parcel, but a new residence is created, then there's an impact fee so that it basically achieves the same thing. Again, which is to deliver funds to the department in order for the provision of parks or the upgrading or maintaining of, the upgrading, sorry, of the existing park facilities. So in 2022, which is the first time we've done the fee update for two years, two years, the cost of land in San Mateo has actually increased, according to Trulia at least. And therefore, it reduces the applicable fees and all land requirements for all new developers. So that's a welcome change for the, for those of you that might be considering building a new house or a multi-unit project. So in summary, that's all the changes that we've made in the actual impactful changes that we've made. There have been a number of changes that have basically consolidated fees. So therefore, we expect that once the fee is, once the fee schedule is published, it should be a little bit more concise and a little bit easier to read for anyone who's interested in doing so. And that's all. So if you have any questions, let me know.
Can I ask you to start with someone else?
Sure. First question, a non-resident surcharge for the picnic tables. We just kind of have gone through this with activities and decided to not do that anymore and do a staggering. And then last meeting, we just talked about staggering rentals of the facility. So why, what's the thinking here? Why are we charging a surcharge to non-residents?
So we do for indoor facilities, so it was keeping it consistent, consistent with that actual portion of the house, so to speak. So for indoor facilities, there is a nonprofit fee, a non-resident fee. So we thought it would be applicable for the outdoor facilities as well and keeping them uniform. We are going to revisit overall with the cost recovery project, the analysis of reincorporating potentially, having a non-resident fee for programming. And, and maybe we won't, but I, I think that we'll examine that through the cost recovery program and determine if, what I would like to put before everyone is, what would be the percentage you're looking for increase? So that may change for next year across the board for non-residents. And then also to consider what the, you know, the, the reduction would be for nonprofits. So I think that's going to be part of the conversation that we'll bring forward as part of the cost recovery. But we wanted to have something to put in for the fee schedule for this year. Because the cost recovery will obviously result in changes for the next year's fee schedule. They won't make it in for this year's.
So I'm understanding that this surcharge is new though for picnic tables, right? So I guess I'm just questioning the put it in, reassess, take it out. I mean, maybe we leave it in, but like, why put it in this year if we're to get a look at it again?
So, yeah, I mean, that's certainly at your direction, so yeah.
Okay, and then my second question, are the appeal fees do seem really high? Do we have a, I mean, I'm assuming there's some sort of waiver program if, for city council fees and that sort of thing, or?
To be totally honest, I'm unsure. So I don't know, I could, I'd be very happy to investigate that and come back. The one I did investigate is that we've only had one appeal to the commission in the past three years, I believe. So for us, it's not something that happens very often. But once again, it's, if you, if you were to look at the fee schedule for all the other departments, that's the price, that's the cost that is applied citywide, so to speak. And we were the outlier. So again, it's, A, we thought that since all the other departments have theirs with the clerk's office, we thought ours should live there too. But if you, the finance director also kind of said to us that it should be, the fee should be reflective of the amount of work that goes in it. And $80 wasn't right. And then, like I said, my logic, I kind of posed this, was that the, if the, if you're gonna do the same amount of work to present to city council or to the commission, why should there be a difference in the fee structure?
Yeah, I, I, I understand that. I guess my, my, the rest of mine will be comments. Thank you. I actually don't know if there is a waiver, but we'd be happy to find that information out. Again, it's a few and far between, so, yeah.
Forgive me if you covered this before I got here. The picnic use cleanup fee used to be a deposit. Is that a actual fee now or is that a deposit?
So the difference is that with a deposit, we had to take the money upfront and then do the process of returning the money afterwards. Whereas now with the fee, it only applies if there's actual cleanup to be done. So if there's no cleanup to be done, then there's no fee payable. So it just takes out a what could potentially be a redundant step in the process by taking money and then giving money back.
So we rarely collect a fee. So the amount of administrative work associated with collecting that fee and then returning it was not worthwhile. So that's why we're proposing it this way.
And when it's charged to the applicants or when it's, when the applicant's booked, are we very clear that we say this, this could be your fee if you don't clean up?
Yes. Yes, it's, I think it's in the language in the permit, yeah.
Okay.
Or it will be. Rewarded.
Yeah. And then in the, the property fees, what, where do ADUs fall on that? So no, that's been talked about a lot.
ADUs don't attract any.
Okay, they're not even the tax on residential building permits or anything?
That's not something that we, so no, there's a, there is a very small tax that is applied, which is approximately, I think, it's in the fee schedule. Let me just find it. That's based on the value of the work that is being done, but it's not, yeah, it's something like 0.5. Let me, oh, oh, yeah.
Yeah, it's 30 cents for a $100 valuation.
Yeah. Yeah, okay. He's got it, yeah.
And that, so that's what gets applied to an ADU?
Yeah. I didn't do building permits, but I'm assuming that if there was a building permit for an ADU and it, that's what it would attract, yeah.
So I appreciate the consolidation of categories. And I apologize if this question complicates that. But I wonder if there was an interest in distinguishing between businesses or nonprofits located within the city of San Mateo versus outside of San Mateo.
So that's another complicated process because there are a lot of businesses that have offices here that don't necessarily, so it takes a lot of administrative work to determine that. And so that's why we didn't include it in that form.
Okay. Yep. So the nonprofits, it's, it's just universal, you can have byvolency community corporation, fine, yep. Um, also, I guess I just, I want to understand, um, you said that there's only been one appeal in the last three years. Do you, do you remember it? Can you tell us about it?
Um, Jill? I, I haven't been, I haven't, no, so no, I do not remember it. But I know that was the only one that we, that we've had in three years, but I can't. I would have to look at the, I would, I will promise to look at the past minutes and give you an update.
I just want to reflect.
Yeah, it was, it was denied. I don't remember the details, do I remember that?
I, I guess my. I guess if it, if the people's granted, I would want there to be some kind of possibility. I'm just surprised by how high the number is, but I also would say the respect of the staff. I guess I'd be interested to know what my other, my fellow officials think. I recognize it's rare, but it just, that number seems very. Those are. That will open us as anything else?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. Mr. Massey, please.
Yes, okay, um, I guess, I guess I would start out with a question, another question about the appeals fee. And that is, can you give us, you know, the sort of 30-second summary of what appeals to our commission? In other words, okay, what decision of our commission, what decision of Park and Rec would be subject to an appeal to us?
Right. So say there is a person that applies for a tree permit and we grant it and we do the posting for the 10 days and the neighbor appeals, they don't want you to cut down the tree. And then it comes to me for my consideration and I either uphold or deny the appeal. If they don't like the decision I've made, then they appeal to the commission. That's the next chain. So they would come to you and hear both, you know, the reasons and the sides. And then if they didn't like your decision, they could appeal it to the city council for final decision. So it's, it's instances of that nature.
So it's only tree permits?
Correct.
That's the only kind of decision?
Yes, correct.
That, where?
They're not tree violations, they're tree permit, um, appeals.
What's the difference between tree violation?
So I've cut down a tree without a permit, so that's a violation. So you cannot, you cannot appeal the viola, you can't appeal the violation that goes to the city manager. Appeals for permits come to the commission and the council.
Okay, so this is, this is, I want to cut a tree down and I've, and I've come, I, I want to cut a tree down.
Right.
On my property and I've come, but it's a heritage tree, so I have to come to, to the arborist.
Correct.
And the arborist says no.
Correct.
And so it goes to you.
Yes.
You say no.
Yes.
Then I want to come to the commission and appeal your decision that I can't cut my tree down.
Correct.
Okay. That's subject to the fee.
There's no fee for that. The applicant is exempt from the fee. That says it in the parentheses. So if you come as part of the appeal, you are exempt. But if someone else comes to appeals, then there's the $519 fee.
Okay, so basically.
I was gonna clarify that upfront, but yes, yes, thank you for asking.
Okay.
Yes.
So now, now, okay, so just, just to make sure, I've got the distinction here. Then, all right, now my neighbor wants to cut its heritage tree down and I don't like it. And so I, and you've approved, your manager, arborist has approved cutting the tree down. And I don't like it. So I appeal and, so I just am filing an appeal. It, it goes to you first and, only if you uphold the decision, doesn't, commission. But in any event, the $519 is paid. Yes.
If it comes to the commission, not if it comes to me. And, and they could drop it and be fine with the decision that I've made and not further appeal. So, but the fee would only apply if we had to bring it to the commission as an agendized item for consideration.
Because, that's because you would have to go through the effort.
Staff.
Really boring a case if it's coming to us, if it's coming to you.
Yes.
You have, that's part of your job, to speak.
Yes.
Okay, okay. All right, and this is the, this is the system for all of the other departments. And I'm speaking specifically with Community Development.
Correct.
That they charge, that they charge to appeal to the planning commission.
Correct. Section 4.1.
Is this new? How long is this?
Appeal fees?
For?
Sometimes there are.
At the commission level. I, I, there have been a few, a few fees to the council, I think, forever.
Yeah, I mean, I'm probably not the best person to answer that question. However, in the other cities that I have been at, it's the same process. So, so I would say fairly substantial amount of time.
Okay, but in any event, right now, right now, what we are doing is aligning ourselves if somebody wanted to build a house next door or something like that, and I felt that I was posting this night, wanted to appeal to, to the planning commission or to the council, and that I'd have to pay the fee.
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah.
I have also wanted to ask about, I've got on page 10, the table. I have also wanted to ask about, I've got on page ten, the table.
What's?
The table, the table of targets of the recreation programs.
So let me speak to the first four pages of the fee schedule. For our section, that actually does have to do with the cost recovery. So that is the methodology that is used to set fees for our programs. So I guess it wasn't totally accurate to say that it's not included, it's just not specific. So there's guidance in the first four pages of the fee schedule for how we determine what those fees are based on direct overhead. And again, we will address these four pages getting updated through the cost recovery project.
Oh, yeah, all right, so this is not really on our agenda for tonight.
Correct.
All right, then can I ask one?
Absolutely.
Out of curiosity, what is building blocks?
I'm learning as you are. I'll let Scott respond to that.
Building blocks is our taller preschool program. And you have building blocks up. See.
Okay.
Brand new name for.
Okay, well, I won't ask any more questions about this then, if if we're not.
We're gonna talk about it at length very soon.
Okay, well, that's fine, I'm 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 done, thank you.
Sorry, on the the tree example, I know when someone has a tree removal permit, neighbors get notified. Where is that in the process of where the appeals like, do you say, or does the arborist say, yeah, you can remove it, and then the neighbors get notified? Or does the neighbors get notified and they have a chance to to appeal to the arborist and he takes that into consideration?
Yeah.
And so that's not a fee that they have to pay or anything. So it's only when you you deem it okay, and I disagree as a neighbor and say I want to challenge it.
Yes.
If if the non-applicant who files an appeal actually wins. You know, it comes for the commission and we actually agree with the the neighbor example. Do they get refunded their work, their appeal fee?
I I don't, I don't know, I don't know the answer to that. I don't know the answer to that, so we can look up for the waiver and then. Return of your fee to file, I doubt it because the work has to happen regardless of if you win or not. So I, it's more, it's aligned with the cost recovery, right? So there's all these people that are doing work on, from the city attorney to the city manager, from the clerk to reviewing it, posting it. So that's, those are the factors that come into the fee, so I wouldn't. I wouldn't assume that it would get refunded, but we can certainly look into that and give you an update at the next meeting.
Um, good old that, I think my questions were covered, we can open it up, open it up for public comment if there's anyone, Gio on the line? We don't have any members of the public.
Okay.
Great, well, we'll come back to commission for comments. Like I said, I really appreciate the consolidation of the categories, it's much easier to tell you that. You know, in the in the past, um, I've had friends wanting to hold events at a variety of locations and it's been difficult to navigate. I really appreciate the consolidation of categories. I will just say, um. I I I'm interested to know a little bit more about the plan for, and I'm sorry, this is a questionnaire and comments. Um, uh, during the period of time when Central Park is under renovation. Um, if there's any concern about lost revenue during that period of time. Um, because I imagine that's a fairly popular place to to rent out. Um, also, I know this is also a little bit outside of, but it's also a place where a lot of recreation activities happen. Um, so I'm just curious if you know, at some point about, um, if there's any concern around that period of time for construction. Um, but overall, I think this is a a good plan, I I know that CPI is a challenge. Um, it continues to be a challenge for everyone for all kinds of reasons, but I appreciate the 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 flexibility here. Staff, thank you.
You might just address the question, and I don't have a great answer, but I want to at least address a little bit. Um, the picnic sites will be impacted, um, but they may not be impacted. Um, at the time of year where they generate the most revenue, but our our picnic rentals, it it's nebulous how much money they they generate. Um, but there will be a plan associated with keeping a portion of the park open for recreational activities, concerts in the park, those kinds of things. So hopefully, as we get closer to going out to bid, there will be a better idea of what that will look like, and we'll certainly bring you an update on that.
Thank you for answering my question.
Sure.
Mr. Malls?
Um, I also, I too have another question, sorry.
No.
Under, I know, sorry. I I remember from a few years back, we talked about commemorative things in the parks. You've got a fee for memorial bench, I thought we talked about like a plaque somewhere. And I don't see that unless there's commemorative tree and maybe there's plaque in front of it. I could be mistaken on if we had a plaque, but I thought I remember I was talking about having some sort of, you know, in memory of so and so or whatever. Um, so I would just ask if that city wants recollection or if it isn't to say to just check on it?
There are times where things get left out of the fee schedule or are put in there incorrectly, for example. Um, we have the Central Park stage rental, it was per use and it's really supposed to be per hour based on last year's approval. So that may have been an oversight, we can go back and look, I really don't know enough about our commemorative. Um, and memorial bench and tree program to know if the there's a standalone fee for a plaque, but we can look into that.
Mission, my recollection was that um, we wouldn't do the plaques because then if we allowed too many, then the um, the parks begin to have like an eerie.
Kind of. I couldn't remember where.
Yeah.
They're usually associated to a tree or a bench, so it's kind of built into those two options.
Yeah, and then further, the with trees and what have you, what we, I I believe when we did our memorial bench. Um. Form, there's something, there's some language that speaks to the fact that we will decide, like, we will give you options as to where it can go. So like, because everybody probably want to have their bench or plaque to go in the rock star position where that person, you know.
Yeah.
It has to be there and it, you know, it doesn't work like that because of the fact that um, it, we may not need another bench there or we may not want a plaque particularly there. Or we may have plans to modify the park in some way similar to the playground at the moment. So I think there was, my my recollection is that it was benches and. I believe even with the trees, it was, we would provide you with a, with an option of, this is where we would like to have a tree planted next. And, you know, you're welcome to say yes or no.
And and.
I will clarify.
Yeah, and similarly, again, we talked about this is like three or four years ago, so I can't remember what we, if we decide to do it or not.
Right.
At this point, but I remember there was a a plaque, discussion about plaque in the dog park. That there was gonna be like a wall of of like Fido, my loading memory, whatever. I can't remember if we decided to actually do it or not, I mean, we had a whole meeting about it, but it was so long ago that I can't even remember the outcome.
Okay.
Um, but I would check on that too.
Okay.
Hmm.
And that was like a cost recovery, it was a, it was like, this is what it costs, whatever, but I would just.
Okay.
Make sure it's in there if it was.
The two that we went ahead with was the one at Bears Park. And then there was going to be, there was um, discussion about doing another one at the golf course. Um, but the golf course has come to a standstill and can't remember why exactly. Um, I think it's because we repaving the parking lot out there and there's gonna be work, so it wasn't a good time. I think that's the reason why, but the only one that we went ahead with was the one at um, Bears Park.
And then my other comment is to the appeal on on decision. Um, I recognize that there's cost involved for staff, but if um. If a applicant who's or if a if a neighbor appeals and is. Victorious in that, in some sense, that's saying the staff made a mistake. And so I think there should be some recognition, I mean, it's it's a difference of opinion and and what we were always, and every time I remember we've had a tree discussion. Uh, it's always been at the um. Advisement of commission, but it actually still defers referred back to you, whether to, like, if we overturn your decision, it's actually not, it's still your call. And you can agree with us or disagree, and then they can appeal to the council, that's where it overrules you. Um, so I don't mean to be like, well, you know, we're, you're saying you made a mistake necessarily, but but if there's a case where. There's a compelling enough reason and such, um, I think there should be some consideration to that, that maybe they get half their money back or something. Um, because I mean, in in general, the fee is to avoid sort of frivolous appeals because you've done your due diligence in your process. Um. But uh. I I do recall, we had a really peculiar case years ago where a um. School district who actually didn't need to come to us, uh, came to us and the neighbor, they were picking on you close trees. We said they weren't bad, the neighbor said they're overhanging my property and I feel this is dangerous, I've already had the leaves fall on my property and it's dangerous for my kids, so they appealed. We ultimately rejected their appeal and then like six months later. Um, Matthew went back out and said the trees are bad and then we let him tear it down. So ultimately, like essentially, the applicants were correct. It was a really weird kind of jurisdictional type thing, whatever, but in that case, I feel like there should be some. Um.
Restitution.
Restitution, you know, at least, at least if you say like, yeah, if you're victorious, you get half the money back or something, that's.
I think it's really hard with trees because. If it were that, yeah, if it was that cut and dry.
Yeah.
It would be a much easier topic to handle in general. Um, and sometimes it's just we agree to disagree and there's really no proof, so to speak, it's just you have a difference of opinion, yes, we should keep this tree or no, we shouldn't.
Yeah.
Um, but we we will go back and ask, um, you know, further questions about waivers, about, you know, restitution and the like. And um, get some more information for you all on that.
Yeah, for their comments.
Mr. Moll? Yeah, my brain is going down a hole.
Don't do it!
I I could see, yeah, I I guess I can see a scenario where um, we we say you have to keep the tree, but the tree is, you know. Kind of dead, and the neighbor points that out, there may be, yes, there may be a. A place there for some sort of, um, I I guess the whole point, the why we were all bringing this up maybe is that it just seems really high, that number. Um, so maybe, maybe it's a little too high if it's giving us all that home, so I guess that's, that's where I land on that, it's that just, that number may be a little high. Um, but I also. I do like the fact that it detears those frivolous neighbor arguments because there's nothing more contentious than. A tiny mall on the property line and a tree on your property line. Um, so with that said, I guess that's my comment on that one. Um, my comment on the surcharge for the non-residents, I I guess I'm just kind of, I don't. I don't feel strongly about it, but it just seems kind of odd to add it in when we're gonna be looking at it, if it's new. If it were something we were doing and moving forward, just keep it. Because I'm kind of like, keep status quo if we're gonna look at it next year, anyway. Those are my comments.
Um, in general, I am supportive of this, I I like the idea of making this of the streamlining. It's simplifying this, uh, the the workings of the fee schedule have mystified me. And I've been on this commission for a number of years now. Um, and so I'm making this more direct and. Uh, sort of more to the point, and and that is, hey, you want to rent a property, you look or. A big site or or facility, you look at the chart, you see, yes, okay, but. As opposed to, well, you know, which which of these categories am I in, and then I have to go to the next thing, etc. So I'm for it. Um. I, uh. I understand what. Well, like the saying about the non-resident fee, I'm certainly not opposed to the idea of the non-resident fee, I think that's fine. But I I don't, I'm not, I don't really understand. Speak back and forth on this, we had, uh, but I think, I guess I I would say. We might, we consider that. Whether we do want to be in a position of no fee, fee, no, and then ending up deciding not to. Just. Through the way.
Yeah, I mean, I certainly have my own philosophy on this, that, you know, as taxpayers, and, you know, you shouldn't pay what a non-resident pays for anything here. And we should pass along, you know, in order to try and cost recover for the use of this room. Um, or a picnic site, that's my own philosophy, but certainly it will come before you as a group um, during the cost recovery. You know, project and then ultimately to counsel for direction. Um, but that that's certainly something that I would have as a staff recommendation is to try and incorporate that. But I don't disagree that, you know, we can wait and do that all together or we can do that now. It 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 will come before you either way. Um, so if you don't feel like it's something that you want to address now, I just would hate to miss the opportunity to collect. Fees when we could, um, for non-residents, I, we always talk about residents being the primary, getting. Um, priority, getting a a cheaper fee, um, or, you know, a more cost-effective subsidized fee. Um, so that's just my own philosophy, so I just wanted to let you know where I stand and why we incorporated it at this point in time. Um, but certainly at the pleasure of the commission, so.
Okay, well, um, I I'm happy to let it, to let it sit until, you know, we're ready to practice on it, but. Just keep that some thought. Um. And I guess I I'm also happy to let this issue, appeals fee, go until we are talking about the cost recovery in general. I guess that's the time. Well, thinking it should be brought up is.
So let me speak to this, the cost recovery has already been done on appeals and it's five nineteen, we just have not been in line with it.
Okay.
So that's why it's jumping because everybody else has been charging that rate and we have been out of alignment with that after. Looking at the entirety of the fee schedule, so that's what we're trying to get in line with, but certainly. We're here for your feedback, we will take it to council after this for their input and feedback. Um, so you'll be making a recommendation and you may choose to change things, leave things out, but this will go to council, I believe. At their March twentieth meeting with your recommendations for their consideration.
Our recommendations that we make tonight.
Correct.
Okay.
So there, there isn't an opportunity to come back at the next meeting to revisit this. Um, I believe that the the fee schedule is going before council on March twentieth, so. Whatever our recommendations are tonight will get presented to them. Um, and then they will either adopt them or, you know, have further discussion about some of these items based on your recommendation.
Okay, um. In those circumstances, I I have to say I'm supportive. I think it's important that we are consistent with the departments. And I think that um, there's not, in my mind, a huge difference between. Healing a decision speed made of a tree. Uh, because we're only talking about major trees and we're only talking about a decision that's. Difficult enough, it's uh, complicated enough that. It's gone to the arborist, it's gone to you and and it's still out there, it's coming to us. I don't see a lot of difference between that and an appeal where your neighbor wants to build a big fence. And you say, well, wait a minute, you have to have a special permit to do that and. Uh, community development says, well, that's okay with us. Uh, I don't, not seeing a big difference here and I guess I I would be supportive of what. I can guys, there's. Thereby a difference of opinion here, but. That's my thought.
Clarify what you said.
Yeah.
Almost every tree is a heritage tree. It's like the ma- the majority of trees are heritage trees.
That's, that's fine, um, all I'm, all I'm saying is that. You've got one situation and another situation, and I think if every other department, city is is taking this approach. I'm happy to see my personal.
Great. Um. I I to say this is simple, it's pragmatic, it makes sense and simple is is better. Um, I actually am comfortable with the uh, the appeal fee as well, this is a sunk cost to have the team have to go in there and prep for it. And and we're not hearing that this is happening all the time or that there's fringe cases where this would really be a bad policy from what I hear. Totally, totally hear you guys and I agree with your, the questions you've raised as well, but like, I'm comfortable moving forward with that, that seems, that seems to make sense to me. Um, but otherwise, no, this this looks great. Anything else?
Yeah, I mean, I feel like we were split on some of these, so it might be good to have some clear direction. Um, and I, um, after listening, I I'm okay with the appeal fee too, it I think it's. Um, and I um, after listening, I I'm okay with the appeal fee too. It I think it's just sticker shock that it jumped so high.
It is.
Um, but I I'm gonna switch my comment on that one, but I'm still sticking to the non-resident surcharge. I think the switch back and forth, back and forth.
Great. So and let me just clarify, because I totally hear what you're saying about the um swi- you know, switching back and forth. I ultimately think we will pass along a fee. I just don't know if it will be higher or lower than twenty dollars. You know what I'm saying? So we do have a, we have a non-resident fee for facilities. And I would like all of that to align to be a certain percentage over what a resident pays, so we can apply it uniformly. Across the board, but I would assume since we are applying a non-resident fee for indoor facilities, that you would want to. Um, with your outdoor facilities, be uniform. I think what is challenging is explaining to people. Why we're doing something one way in one location and then a different way in another location. And I totally get the programming aspect. And that's another conversation. Um, but I just wanted to let you know, I do believe that we will have a fee. It's just a matter of what that fee will be. So I agree with you. If we don't want to put it in as twenty dollars and wait and put it in. Um, when we do the cost recovery and get more feedback, totally get that. Um, but my my feeling is that there will be a a res- a non-resident fee. So I I don't know if that helps clarify anything.
Um, yes and no, um, because we've we've spent a lot of time with the resident, non-resident on the activity side. And I really understand the logic and we're talking about having priority, time, priority reservation. Um, and so I I think it's still kind of a discussion to have. So.
Yeah, totally good. It's for.
Can I just clarify a question about that? Do other cities have a similar structure?
They do. Yeah, almost every other city charges a non-resident fee for their picnic site.
And twenty dollars is probably.
Um, it's anywhere between five and twenty dollars. Um, and with the programming aspect, it's a little bit different. So with a facility, it's more straightforward. With a program, um, and I think the philosophy of what I've read as to why you guys did the pilot program to incorporate a non-resident. Into the resident fee is because it helps you offer more things. So it it actually allows you to do the programming, whereas a non-resident fee on a facility is. You know, it's wear and tear, it's maintenance, it's upkeep, it's cleaning, it's all of those things. So I feel like they're a little bit different. Um, but again, still up for further conversation. So. And then in terms of voting tonight, is the goal then for us to get some sort of consensus in terms of supporting the proposal? Yes. Okay. I don't feel like we're.
I I didn't address the fee. I I'm generally philosophically aligned with you on that and so I don't have a problem with it. And I would say that. Uh, our cost recovery for the golf course has a resident, non-resident, and so that is in alignment with what we're doing. There as well. So I don't have a problem with that. Um, the other one was this this appeal fee. In my nine years on the commission, there's only been one case where it where it would have actually applied. Uh, which to me, from a what's right to the person, if they actually actually are sort of victorious in that appeal. It feels right that they should get some money back. So I, so to me, it's it's a respect the time you put into it, recognizing that that actually rarely happens and. If there is a case for appeals, I do feel justified that. And I and I like the deterrent. Otherwise, I mean, I have no problem with the fee where it is, just if someone is. Makes a compelling argument that that then, you know, convinces enough people, I think it it sort of justifies them. And I'm not even saying get it all back, just like half or something, is my opinion.
Well, and I would be interested to see if that happens in any other capacity.
I think it's probably highly far more likely in a community development, you know, planning application type thing.
Right, but I don't know. Yeah, yeah, I don't know if there is some kind of, like you said, restitution for the winner.
Yeah.
If they pay the fee. So I I'd want to look into that again, just to be uniform with whatever our policies and procedures are in other departments. Um, I think it's just helpful in trying to stay consistent, um, but I can certainly look into it and um, we can, you know. If that is happening in other departments, we can certainly say that that would need to be reflected um as part of your. Um, direction to us. So we can certainly look into that. Any other sticking points? Are we comfortable with this?
I think it's just the two.
Yeah.
Did we, do we all opine enough that you have consensus on a appeal fee?
I think we're.
Working on the appeal fee, right?
Sarah?
Yeah, I just, I guess I think like, I'd want there to be some kind of discretion about the appeal fee, like. Maybe it's to give half, I don't know, and maybe it's to give some of it back. Maybe it's that in consideration. I know it's very rare, but there's just something about. Like, I I just think five hundred and nineteen dollars is a lot of money. Um, I know when the, you know, it's a, you know. Millions and millions of dollars every year as the city, but.
Looking to uniformity, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, I am, I am. I like, generally, I I think all of this is great and I want to say yes. Um, you know, the the non-resident fee, I think makes sense, I understand it. Um, we want to prioritize San Mateans and join San Mateo. I love that. Um, and we want to be consistent with neighboring cities. That's the other thing I want to say is like, we do want to be consistent with our peer cities. And so if that's, if that's where we are, I'd be just support all of that. I just. I I don't want an appeal to only be available to someone who can afford that appeal. That's that's really the sticking point for me. Um, and I'm not sure, but I think I might be the only renter on this commission. Um, and and that makes a difference, you know, is is an appeal only something that's available to. You know, a wealthier homeowner um or or to a wealthier business owner. Um. Yeah, that's that's a sticking point for me.
So I think we can probably handle this in two ways.
And I recognize it's a very rare issue.
Yes.
Like, I I really, I do.
Yes. Um, so I think that if you're in agreement about having the fee. And then for us to pursue and update in the agenda report that goes before council, that. There was consensus potentially about having a waiver for this particular process. And or restitution for the winner, so to speak. Um, so we can put those two things forward for council to consider as part of your feedback, but overall, that you're in agreement with the actual fee. If that sounds reasonable, or if you need to tweak that in any way, shape or form, happy to hear feedback on that.
Mr. Messi, are you comfortable?
Because council may or may not agree, right?
Yeah.
I guess I would be happier to see it. Phrase more along the lines of. Not necessarily that there was a a uniform view about. Restitution that that. That they were there. The commission discussed these things and wants the council to.
Consider.
To consider, to consider it, but. Whereas we are, we are saying we're comfortable with the recommendation of the fee amount. That the waiver restitution is something that. We we discussed and want the commission and want the council to think about.
Okay.
Can we do it that way? Is that acceptable?
Yeah. And I I would even just from my perspective, say that if I was, if we were planning commission right now, I would probably have no problem with it. Because I think it would be a different, you know, that's more like, here's the prescribed. Building envelope, you let it build in and all of that. I think, you know, Commissioner Massey's got a lot of experience on planning commission. And has that perspective and I think I would agree a hundred percent in that nature. I think. This is one where I'm okay with it not aligning with the rest, because it happens so rarely and it would be a unique case and I and I feel like. The the waiver or, you know, the bill, like, the chance of it happening are probably nil.
Yeah.
But just on a principle basis, I feel that it's a. It's a worthwhile thing, yeah.
Built in.
Yeah, and it's and it's not. I think the value. The cost versus a development or something has a much more, like. If I'm a homeowner and I'm pissed about this development next to me, there's, I'm gonna have an argument that's gonna impact my cost of my my property value and it's not, and there's. There's justification for that fee. The uh, the only case it's gonna be is a tree, there's probably far less sort of monetary value to to it. Uh, and so there's probably more of a a different compelling reason, which is why I kind of want to decouple money from it in a sense, if that.
Understood, understood.
Yeah, I mean, I I I agree with what actually everyone's saying, but. Um, e- even if it's rare, when it does happen, it can be very significant for the person that it happens to. So I I think we just want to keep that in mind that like. That that's a higher factor to me than how often it happens. It's like, what is the impact on the person who lives next door, who loves this tree and is gonna lose this tree? Um, that's that's more. Where from. So I'm I'm okay with the recommendation that you said, like. And even if you want to phrase it the way that Commissioner Massey said, I'm okay with that, just that the council considers this. Okay?
Yes. Send them the link to the video.
Anything else we need to, we need to iron out the non-resident?
I think I'm in the minority here, but I'm gonna stick by my viewpoint and be okay being overruled.
Right, not a key deal, we're good to uh, oh. Yes, you'd like to vote for a motion? Uh, is there a motion?
Yeah, the the motion is to recommend the fee schedule and the caveats we discussed.
Yes, so I don't know if you want to tease out the specific one for the residents so that you you'd be on the record. Um. I I I I'm just giving you the option.
I appreciate that. I'm okay.
Okay, okay. All right, so um, your feedback is duly noted. Um, but yes, if you could just make a motion to adopt it in its form um presented tonight. Um, with the caveat that we will include information about consideration for a waiver of some sort or potential restitution. Um, in tree appeal cases.
I'll make a motion.
I'll second.
Great.
Vice Chair Wallnick?
Hi.
Commissioner Hall?
Hi.
Sheriff Hall?
Hi.
Commissioner Fields?
Hi.
Commissioner Massey?
Hi.
This motion is best. That was the reports and announcements.
A few things, and as you are all aware, we've had some more storms. Um, and we've lost a few more trees, unfortunately, out of the golf course. Um, one of which um fell and hit our pump station for the pumps that. Um, pump out the water at the golf course. So there was some damage done there, so we'll have to do some repairs. Um, we also um had a tree come down at Fitzgerald Field, damaging the fence on the left field side. Um, so repairs will be done there as well as the tennis courts at Central, which I I'm not sure if you are aware, but they're closed currently. Um, so um, we're looking into getting those repairs done. Um, unfortunately. Or fortunately, we have a very robust tennis program out at Central Park. Um, and so they will be relocated um to Beresford and Shoreview. And so there will be an impact on two of the four courts at Beresford for the next few weeks. Um, as they um determine repairs out at Central Park. Um, so we're hoping that goes quicker than.
So was that the same tree that did both?
That was not tree, that was that was wind, the wind um on that um one day where there was robust wind. It literally took, it had nothing to do with the tree. Um, the fence um came up from the aggregate where it was.
And what was the damage to the tennis court?
There was not really de- damage to the tennis court. Um, the fence that is along the inner um part of the park that. Um, is adjacent to the self-help for the elderly building where the um ADA accessible ramp from the garage comes up. That is where the um fence is leaning the most. Um, and then also on um the other side where the giraffe is, um, there's some leaning there as well. Um, and then the inner fencing um needs to be repaired. So working on that. Um, in other news, spring revenue is at three hundred and ten thousand dollars so far, which is up from last year significantly. So I'm very excited about all the efforts that staff have made um for bringing programming back. Um, still working on cost recovery, hopefully that will be before you very soon. Um. East Hillsdale, Central Park, they're still tracking, um, but no real updates to provide you tonight. Um, wanted to talk about a couple of things as far as special events um upcoming and things happening. Our San Mateo Sister City. Um, Toyanaka um is celebrating its sixtieth anniversary. And so there is a celebration tour um that will be happening this year and they're having a meeting. Um, to get more information if anybody is interested um in traveling with the group or finding out about more opportunities, fundraising efforts and such. And that will be on Wednesday, March twenty second at the senior center. I'm happy to send this information to you after the meeting. Um, also wanted to um mention, just to get on your calendars, April eighth will be Extravaganza. Um, which I'm sure you're all familiar with, um, as well as the Lights and Sirens event that Powell puts on. Um, as their major fundraiser um for the year and that will be on April twenty eighth. Again, I will send this information to you all. And lastly, just want to talk about um our summer programming. We are actually um having an uh uh. Info night uh tomorrow night at the King Center to help um get people prepared to register. For summer programs and aquatics, which can be challenging. Which class does my child belong in? Are they a guppy? Are they not? Um, so we're gonna be doing that um tomorrow night um at the King Center, starting at five thirty. Um, and then our summer camps and aquatics guide, best guide of the year, has come out and so summer registration will start on Monday. So I'm looking forward to it being very busy around here very soon. So happy to answer any questions about that, but those are all my updates.
Anything else? Yeah, um, do you want to tell us, um, I've been hearing more about uh potentially having youth advisory positions on our.
Yes.
Do you have any updates on that or can you tell us anything about that?
Yeah, um, so on the, what is today? On the March sixth um city council um meeting, there will be the second reading of the ordinance um for. Uh, the Park and Rec Commission um update and that includes uh, there will be. Uh, two youth commissioners that are non-voting, that will be a part of this commission going forward if it's approved and adopted on um Monday. And so um we've been in talks about recruitment and timeline and such. Um, and so we will bring you a more robust update on that, um, but it's not ironclad yet. They still have one more step to go on Monday night um to make it official. It's like a reading of the ordinance. Yep.
Heather, how's your bank account?
We fixed sixty bikes and we had, we had to turn people away at the end of the day. Um, and then we we got twenty-one bike donations for the bike exchange. So awesome, awesome. And uh, yeah, it was very, very well attended. Too well attended. We shortened it by an hour because, yeah, um, I mean, we shortened from our previous ones, we shortened it by an hour, but I guess we.
Probably have. Yeah. Great, we adjourn. Thank you, thank you, thank you so much.